Good evening, everyone. We have a full house, just the way I like it. Notice is hereby given that there will be a special meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals this evening, Monday, February 3rd, here at the Wigan Auditorium in City Hall. Tonight, we have a continued application of Forty Oak Street Development LLC for a Chapter 40B comprehensive permit as it applies to the premises known as Forty Oak Street, Peabody, Mass. The petitioner seeks to construct 80 rental units. The property is located in an R4 zoning district. We have, it looks like we have quite a few speakers this evening. I am going to remind you that when you are at the microphone, you just press the button once, and please speak clearly into the mic. We seem sometimes to have a little trouble listening and hearing everybody, but I think we have taken care of all of that, so just please speak directly and clearly into the microphone. And shut it off when you're all done talking. So this evening, the zoning board, we are going to hear from elected officials. Doesn't have to be all of you, but whoever would like to speak, tonight's the night. The abutters, and it looks like there's quite a few abutters, and that's wonderful. And if you all want to speak, that's wonderful too. However, I would imagine there's just so much information that one can give tonight. So if a butter 1 to 10 says whatever you're going to say, and a butter 11 to 20 wants to repeat that, I'm going to politely ask you to just go up to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and just say, "I agree with my, the previous people." Because there's no reason to be redundant and to listen to somebody repeat what's already been said. And we also don't want to be here till midnight. If we have to, we have to, but you understand what I'm saying, right? Good. And we also, the mayor is due to arrive around 7:30. Once he does arrive, we're going to let him speak. I believe we are going to also hear from police and fire and traffic, if that's available. So, I believe Attorney Oliveri would like to say a few words at this point. Is that correct? Yep? All right then, we will now begin.
Chairman Galucci and board members, my name is Frank Oliveri. I'm the attorney representing the Peabody Lodge of Elks. I'm just going to help you out a little bit here. I'm sorry. My name is Frank Oliveri, and I represent the Peabody Lodge of Elks. And I'm here this evening to discuss a situation that occurred over the last couple of weeks. About two weeks ago, I received a communication, an email, from Attorney Roger Davis, who represents the Larkin Development Company. He told me that Larkin wanted to soil test the property at Forty Oak Street, and would be there on January 28th. On that day, Larkin came on the premises with a large steam shovel and began excavating a nine-foot by nine-foot hole in the property. Regrettably, the site was positioned in a high-traffic area in the back of the lodge's property. When questioned by the lodge officers and members, the employee told the Elk officer that they were there to determine a water line running underneath the property, and he was unaware of any soil testing being taken place. When he was further asked, he was unable to provide a permit nor a certificate of insurance for liability and workers' compensation. I'm informed that a building inspector happened upon the scene, and he told Larkin Company that it couldn't continue the work without providing the requested information. The employee further told the Elk officer that when Larkin was finished, they would have to somehow cover the area. The employee said that their instructions were to place cones around the nine-foot hole, and they were told by the inspector that under no conditions could anything but metal plates be used to be put down. They agreed to cover the hole with plates, and unfortunately, they left a small opening. And it's my understanding from talking to Elk officers that several of the members who came there with their vehicles encountered the hole and had trouble getting around the area. Later in the day, a certificate insurance, of insurance, was delivered to the building department. I have a copy of it here, but unfortunately, although it's a regular certificate, it shows, does not show the Elks Lodge as being a rider or a second insured. I have taken, or I have arranged to have taken photographs, Ms. Chairman, and I was wondering if the lodge would like to see the photographs. The Peabody Lodge of Elks really doesn't know what they were doing on the property. The employee said he wasn't sure, but he thought they were checking the water lines. Well, the fact of the matter is, on the day that this occurred, I received a call from an officer of the Peabody Lodge of Elks. I was in my office, and I immediately sent an email to Roger Davis, the attorney representing Larkin, and asked him what was going on, and how could I be insured that the lodge would be safe under the circumstances. Up till this evening, I've received no reply from Attorney Davis. The Peabody Lodge of Elks asked me to come here this evening to make the Board of Zoning Appeals aware of these circumstances and what they consider to be imprudent and careless behavior on the part of Larkin's agents at the locus. Thank you.
I just would like to comment on that. So it definitely, I wanted to comment to you. It's all right. You're not the first guy that put his back to being known. At any rate, so, yeah, this sounds like a legal issue, and the zoning board, you know, was aware of it. It totally is wrong, and it's too bad somebody didn't call the police.
What makes me concerned, Ms. Chairman, is the fact that I was told this was a soil test. Now, I'm not that familiar with the situation, but a soil test, I thought, would be digging down into the soil and checking the soil for whatever. This isn't what they were doing. They wanted access into the lodge building so they could check the main water main. They had, it had something to do with the water lines in the property, but that isn't what I was told by Mr. Davis when he first emailed me back two weeks before. I think the important thing here to keep in mind is, this is careless behavior on the part of Larkin as far as the lodge is concerned. They dug a nine-foot hole right where the vehicles or the members come through. They didn't want to cover the area except put cones around it, very dangerous, and only at the insistence of the building department that they place, that they place plates on the area. The employee told the lodge officer that they would come back no later than Friday to fill the hole in. That was, that was last Friday. That hasn't happened.
Right, thank you. And I'm sure that you, you have taken all of this into your consideration.
I have.
Okay, thank you very much. How about elected officials? Any elected official in the presence of us this evening? Anybody would like to speak? Yep, school committee counselors. Ward 1, Mr. Welton, I believe.
Hello, thank you. Craig Welton, 195 Lynn Street, Peabody, Massachusetts. I'd like to speak opposed to this project. I think a lot of times when you talk about affordable housing projects, the perception is that if you're against one, you're against affordable housing. I'd like to say that's not the case. I am in favor of affordable housing, but a project of this scope, this size, I think would put unnecessary strain on our infrastructure and also nearby Welch School. Also, the project is in a flood zone, and for that reason, and for the previous two, I'd like to make clear that I'm opposed to this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark O'Neill. I live at 21 Antrim Road here in Peabody, and I'm here tonight as a member of our city council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I've been following this case for the past few years and also attended the last few ZBA meetings on this matter. I came here tonight to add my voice to those who've already spoken out against this plan. The concerns raised regarding the increased to-off-site traffic congestion, as well as placing a five-story building that does not fit the character of the surrounding neighborhood of two and three family homes are real. In addition, the potential for life safety challenges to future residents at this proposed residential site, as well as to the surrounding neighborhood, cannot be waived away by the developer. As all parties in attendance know, this property is located in a FEMA flood zone. While the city has undertaken great efforts to reduce flooding in the downtown area, the proposed building structures and other site changes may actually worsen flood conditions for the surrounding neighborhood. Lastly, the difficulty of our fire department and other first responders trying to access this location in an emergency event have not been addressed by the applicant in any meaningful way. I respectfully ask this board to decline this applicant's permit. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Joe Amico. I'm at 7 James Street, and I'm also on the Peabody School Committee, so I'll be talking about it from a school's perspective. It is, it is my experience that a multi-bedroom apartment complex would occupy school-aged children and their, their families. The elementary school for the residents of this area is a K-5 Welch Elementary School. It is already at capacity, and a majority of the students qualify for decent free lunch programs. It is categorized as a Title I school. We have, we also have a very large English-language learner population of students at the Welch. Because our building is already at capacity, it would be very difficult to service additional students that this project would bring in. We would be overcapacity if this building came in, and it would be a disservice to the students and staff of the Welch, Welch School. The Oak Street project is also in a flood zone, as alluded to by the first two speakers. This puts our bus drivers at risk as well. Many of these students would, would more than likely, the older students would more than likely take a bus to the Higgins and also to the high school, so I'd hate to see our bus drivers have to drive in during a flooded area or a snowstorm followed by a rainstorm that could produce a flood. It would put bus drivers and students at risk. And also, we have first responders here, our police, fire, and emergency responders. They would go in regardless of what happens, but they shouldn't have to. Their lives would be at risk, and, and I just bring in a potential snowstorm in, say, March, we follow it up with a rainstorm, and they're going in in a potential fire. That could just be so hazardous to the residents and our first responders, so I'd ask that we deny this. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Hockman.
Madam Clerk, Madam Chairwoman, Board, Jared Hockman, 52 Ellsworth Road. I am also a member of the Peabody School Committee, and I share my colleague, Mr. Amico's, concerns with regard to this project and the impact it would have on schools, school personnel, school students. You heard Mr. Amico talk about buses perhaps having to service this property, being in a flood zone, putting children at, in risk, putting our bus drivers at risk. In addition to that, being that this property is in a flood zone and downtown still has flooding issues, we sometimes have to close schools throughout the city because of flooding that occurs on Foster Street, on Main Street, on Central Street. We feel that this project would only further impact the possibility of flooding and the potential loss for school days within our school calendar year. The Welch School community is, the Welch School at this point is already at or overcapacity. We're currently partnered with the Mass. School Building Authority for a project where we're in the feasibility stage to make a determination as to whether or not that school in its current condition will continue to exist. The Mass. School Building Authority has placed us in a program where there's a possibility, although just a possibility at this time, that they may suggest that we replace that building based upon the condition that it's in. They're also telling us that they would perhaps provide more classrooms because the building is already overcapacity. These students would be districted in the Welch School District if they lived at Oak Street. Our next closest elementary school would be the Center School, and that school is already overcapacity and is, I believe it is the opinion of every engineer or building inspector in the city that the Center School is in the worst physical condition of any municipal building in the city currently. So we have grave concerns about where these students, if this project were to be completed, were to go to school, the impact it would have on our staff in its entirety, the students throughout the school district, and we vehemently oppose this project.
Thank you. Mr. Charis.
Hello. Edward Charis, Ward 4, counselor and former school committee. And I'm going to speak on both as a former school committee and an award counselor, but I'm going to make it very short. I agree with everyone is saying. I understand what can be listened to and what can be supported, and it, but even though if it's the overcrowding of the schools or the, you know, the atmosphere that's around, that this board may not be able to recognize that, but it is so many other issues that you can recognize. So I'll make it short. I do agree with everyone that has been speaking, and I oppose to this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Good evening, Chairwoman Galucci and members of the board. My name is Maureen Dunn, and I am the daughter of School Committee Vice Chair Beverly Ann Griffin Dunn of 10 Colfax Street. My mother is presently in Washington, DC advocating for education funding with members of Congress. As you know, she has attended other Zoning Board of Appeals meetings regarding the Forty Oak Street project, and she regrets not being able to appear tonight to personally address this board. I will be reading her statement and will then provide you with a written copy for the board's record. As an elected member of the Peabody School Committee, I have joined my colleagues in a separate letter specifically addressing our concerns regarding school issues and safety issues surrounding this development. As a lifelong resident of Ward 2, I wish to bring to your attention my specific neighborhood concerns. As a citizen of Peabody, I have citywide concerns, and as a resident of Massachusetts, I have societal concerns regarding this project. The development of affordable housing for the Forty Oak Street property has been proposed under Chapter 40B of Massachusetts General Laws, also known as the Massachusetts Comprehensive Permit Act. This act, commonly known as 40B, allows developers of affordable housing to override certain aspects of municipal zoning bylaws and other requirements, including safety and health requirements. If this development is allowed to proceed under 40B, it will override significant zoning bylaws negatively affecting the quality of life for the residents of the development, as well as that of the surrounding neighborhood. A development of this proposed size could not be placed in a more inappropriate area. Building an 80-plus-unit apartment complex, including eight townhouse units on a parcel which floods continuously, is not fair to the residents of the new building, nor is it fair to the abutting and surrounding neighborhoods. The landing question is where the surrounding higher ground drains, and placing a development for the, of the scope proposed will subject the neighborhood to increased flooding and drainage issues. For decades, the city of Peabody has been working tirelessly to mitigate and improve flooding problems in the downtown area. We are now faced with a proposed development which will not only exacerbate flooding issues, it will place hundreds of residents into the very heart of the flooding. Market-based housing on the same scale could never be built on this parcel, on this parcel. But because this development will provide affordable housing, the same restrictions and parameters that would prevent other types of housing is waived or modified. Affordable housing has its place, but do those residents deserve less protection from the destructive flooding they will endure? Loss of vehicles, household goods, furnishings, that is what will occur if this development is allowed. How often is affordable housing built in a floodplain? I contend it is only built when 40B is used to circumvent municipal zoning bylaws, Conservation Commission rulings, and appropriate and reasonable building requirements designed to protect residents from dangerous and unhealthy conditions. In this case, the proposed setbacks, sidelines, and coverage of the parcel will not only circumvent Peabody's zoning requirements, but public safety concerns will be ignored as well. In a neighborhood of single-family homes, two- and three-unit apartment buildings, small businesses, and factories, this proposed building will tower over the surrounding homes, as well as abut some of those homes. Some with little more than mere feet between the buildings. Fire safety is always a concern in congested neighborhoods. However, 40B will allow this development to go forward with no regard to the safety of the current nor the new residents. Market-based housing would be built in conformity with the established safety considerations which form the basis of Peabody's zoning requirements. But since this development will provide affordable housing, the new residents will not benefit from those protections afforded to them under the law. And, of course, the surrounding neighborhood will be negatively affected in this regard as well. There are so many issues raised by this proposed development, and the list is lengthy. Lack of parking in the neighborhood is presently addressed by the current shared parking area provided by current owners of the Forty Oak Street parcel. The proposed development will not provide enough parking for the new residents. And the current residents in the neighborhood temple will lose the ability to remove cars from the surrounding roads, which are all very narrow and most are one-way, during snow emergencies and religious services. Residents and their visitors at the proposed development will have nowhere to park, but in the already overburdened neighborhood, again, impeding fire and police response to the neighborhood, as well as preventing current residents from parking on the limited on-street parking. But since this is going to provide affordable housing, apparently those residents and their neighbors should not expect the same protection as residents in other housing statuses. This proposed, proposed development will cover a significant percentage of the property with its structure. Where will the children who reside in this new development play? There is no green space to speak of in this development. Because these children live in affordable housing, do they not deserve the space to play? Or will they be relegated to play in the parking lots or the streets surrounding this building? Do they deserve less than the people living in market-based housing? The goal of 40B was to provide affordable housing, but apparently to look the other way when developers are allowed to ignore municipal regulations, which were put in place to provide a good and reasonable quality of life for all residents. This proposed development is a perfect example of using the law to warehouse people based upon their income, with a total disregard for the basic goals of safety and quality of life issues. The Massachusetts Chapter 40B law was designed to provide affordable housing, but is being perverted by developers intent on profits over quality of life, all on the backs of current and future residents. This is a societal deficit. If this development on Oak Street is allowed to proceed under 40B protection, I believe the residents of the development, as well as the current neighborhood residents and the city of Peabody, are being treated with disrespect and a total lack of equality for all. I, Beverly Ann Griffin Dunn, stand by this statement and thank you for the opportunity to address this board.
Thank you.
Members of the board, very quickly, my name is Tom Walsh, Thomas Walsh. I live at 170 Lynnfield Street in Peabody. I am also the state representative in the 12th Essex District, which this parcel is located. Just very quickly, I think Peabody has done a very good job over the years of providing moderate and low-income housing, as well as market-rate housing, and I think that some of the actions that the council has taken most recently with the overlay district at the North Shore Mall, Route 114, and some other areas, really indicates the commitment that the city has towards providing the housing that we need. This particular parcel, and nobody knows it better than you as members of the board, does not really fit what the petitioner is trying to do. It just seems to me that this is really, you know, they are within their legal rights to file the 40B, but I just think that it is little bit of an abuse of the 40B law in that we're trying to pack in so many units in a very congested area and very little regard for the quality of life in that neighborhood. So I would just like to be on record as opposed and ask that, as you continue your deliberation, that you keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other elected official at this point in time? How about Conservation? Anybody from Conservation? Great. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stuart Lazares. I'm on the Conservation Commission. I'm here with Lucia Del Negro, who is our Conservation Agent. My address is 2 Upphum Street in Peabody. And I'm here to discuss the 40B situation, the site quality, and the future. This is an old project. It has been before the Conservation Commission from March of 2014 to March of 2015. And during the year, the commission requested test pits be done to study what it looks like under the tarmac that's there from the parking lot. DEP's comments echoed the commission's request. Soil test pits and determination of the estimated seasonal high groundwater at the infiltration site must be made prior to proposing infiltration. In other words, we got to find out what's in the ground so that we can figure out where the water is going to go once this property is built. And after reading the 40B application, it appears that test pits have not been conducted on the parcel, and the groundwater depths were estimated. I was there on January 28th with Lucia and Will Pulitz, who is our city engineer, and we witnessed the digging of the two soil test pits. I'm not going to comment on size or anything else, but upon reaching a depth of approximately three feet, the groundwater was observed coming up and filling the hole. The weather on that day was dry with no rain in the forecast, and the question remains, what happens in April when it begins to rain frequently? This whole project is in a FEMA flood zone AE. The property is located entirely in the flood zone. The rear portion of the, of this property is a buffer zone to an existing wetland right next to it. And the wetland had water in it the day we were there. The applicant's flood zone comments, this goes in with the application on February 22nd of 2019. The garage level is kept very open structurally to comply with flood zone design guidelines, even though there is no historical record of any flooding on the property. The garage structure that they're talking about is putting this unit, these units up on posts and parking under the, you know, at the bottom of the building, with the apartments being above it. Conservation Commission has documentation, pictures of the flooding during 2011, 2014, three times. This picture was taken by Counselor McGinn on July 6th. This picture was taken by Consular McGinn on July 15th, 2014. So it does flood. The missing items that we see is the applicant has to come before the Conservation Commission to get our approval, and they have to prepare and submit a notice of intent. They have to submit plans that would show underground how they're going to move the water and where it's going to go, and they have to submit the test pit findings, which we have not seen yet. This is just a quick graphic of what I found on the city's, this is the city's website for, and I don't, people probably, people probably cannot see this real well, but it's the area of Forty Oak Street, and the blue arrow is-
To the board, please.
The blue arrow is where, the blue arrow is where the property is located. This is what happens when you overlay the floodplain, the flood zone, and the property itself is then located in this area here. The whole thing is under the flood, is in the floodplain. I don't, I personally do not see, and I think the Conservation Commission would be hesitant to approve this project based on the fact that this is just going to be underwater. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lozares. Nobody else from Conservation? Okay. The mayor's not here yet, is that correct? Do you think maybe Police and Fire would like to speak now?
Good evening. My name's Tom Griffin, and I'm the police chief, and I have Captain Scott Richards with me. He's in charge of the Traffic Division here in the city. And at this point, we would be opposed to this project for a number of different reasons. That particular neighborhood at this point is one of our most densely populated areas. We already have our highest call volume in that area, primarily medical calls, parking issues, traffic, accidents, that type, things of that nature, which this will just exasperate by adding probably close to 200 people to that particular area. We are also concerned with the number of vehicles that this project will bring in two very, very difficult intersections at either end of Oak Street. At the top end on Washington Street, where people will have to come in to access the site. Aborn Street is right within several, just several feet away. It's a, it's a very busy street, particularly during rush hour. People use that as a cut-through to Salem and back and forth. We would ask that there be some type of a traffic study done to determine how that's going to play out, if you're going to bring additional, at least 100, I think 120 vehicles was quoted, but, and that's probably on the low end. The other end of the street at Foster Street is just as difficult. It's very narrow. People will end up getting frustrated, we believe, and then trying to go through other parts of the neighborhood, which will end up causing other problems in the other parts of the neighborhood. Another concern we have is during the winter months with the snow removal, it doesn't appear that there's any, any place for the snow to be stored that's moved in that property. So how that's going to occur and what they're going to do with those vehicles while they're doing that, while the city is also trying to clean up the streets, that's a concern for us. I've already, over a couple of different seasons, winter seasons that I've been the chief, I've had discussions with Consular McGinn about that neighborhood in particular and having to reroute traffic and change oneways streets just because of the volume that's already presently there, and this is just going to add to that. Another concern we have is, as everybody else has brought up, is the flooding and how that's going to impact our ability to access that building, should there be, should there be a problem within that building if we, if we can't get to the elevators? Because if they go to the ground level where the water is, how that's going to be worked through. And again, we're concerned if there are kids and people in the neighborhood that want to get outside and recreate, we don't want them playing in the streets or playing in a parking lot. And the nearest locations for something like that would be Maz Park or Emerson Park, which are quite a distance away. So those are a number of our concerns, you know, that we would like to see, with a, with a project of this size, it's just very concerning to us, and we would, we at this point in time be opposed to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Bettencourt, you're on.
Well, good evening, members. Thank you for serving on the ZBA and allowing me the opportunity to speak. I was a little late because I was at, I was speaking to a Boy Scout troop, City of Peabody Boy Scout troop, about government service and rights and responsibilities of being a good citizen. And what, one of the things I spoke about was if you had concerns of something in your neighborhood or in your city that was a concern of yours, that you may, you needed to make sure that you were heard and spoke up and made the officials in your city know what might concern you. And I actually spoke briefly about why I was coming here today to speak on an issue that does concern me, the proposed development at Oak Street. And I think we've already had a number of people spoke and outlined their concerns, and a lot of it's going to be repetitive as to what I speak about. But certainly, I think all of you know the area very well. It is a tight-knit neighborhood. It is congested already, a number of multifamilies, narrow roads, a great number of families and residents live in this area. And I think bringing in 80 units of housing into this location would significantly impact and already, and create a much more congested area and already a congested area. And I think that'll have a large effect, a negative effect, on the neighborhood as a whole. So that's a concern I have, is certainly traffic, parking, people's ability to access those roads to get around in their neighborhoods. Certainly Chief Griffin, I heard speak on it, and I know others have, about the difficulties when we have snowstorms and where the snow is going to go in those locations to allow people to get around. We have buses that go down those roads, trucks. That's kind of an area with its businesses and residential, and I think that will have a significant negative impact on that area. But the two things that really concern me, and I know this has been touched on by others, but is, that is an area that has had considerable flooding in the past. You know, there's always hotspots in our city when I know we're going to have rainstorms, significant rainstorms or rain events. There are a number of hotspots in the city that I'm concerned about, and that is always one area that has had considerable flooding in the area. I think you've seen maps and heard from our Conservation Commission members about some of their experiences and their thoughts on this. But without question, this is the area that has had significant flooding issues in the past, and that has caused a negative effect on our neighborhoods and on the city as a whole. And then the biggest one for me is public safety vehicle access. I have heard concerns expressed by our chief, Police Chief Griffin, Captain Richards in the department, a number of vehicles are over there quite often. I've heard from our fire chief, our previous fire chief, Steve Pazdin, and our chief now, Chief Daley. We have Captain Dowling, who is here as well. And what I've heard from them and what they've put in writing to Mass Housing when this was first proposed, was their concern about having motor vehicle public safety access. Fire trucks, police vehicles, emergency safety vehicles, ambulances, being able to access that site in cases of an emergency. And of course, there are going to be emergencies in, when you have neighborhoods where a lot of people are living. There's going to be the need for police, there's going to be a need for fire, there's going to be a need for ambulance services. And to hear our public safety officials express to me and put in writing their concerns about whether a fire truck is going to be adequately able to circumvent or navigate that area in order to provide important key lifesaving potentially services to our residents is of grave concern to me. And it's something that I really want to hammer home, and I'm sure others will, that this is something that we really have to protect and guard against. So I wanted to be here to speak to that. I know a number of department heads are prepared and ready, some of them may have already spoken. Certainly our Police Department with Chief Griffin, Captain Richards, our Fire Department. Chief Daley is unable to be here today, he's recovering from an injury, but Captain Dowling is here. They can both be here at the next meeting to speak on more specific concerns about the Fire Department, but certainly I think they are key testimony to have as to what their concerns are, and they can give specifics as to the type of vehicles and their concerns about access to that site. We have our Conservation Commission, our Community Development Office, speaking about their concerns about infrastructure, the Department of Public Works, their infrastructure concerns with traffic and parking, handling of snow. The Department of Public Works can certainly speak to, and they can come to the next meeting, can certainly speak to their issues and problems that they have already in that area, handling snow and making sure that the roads are clear and people are able to travel, get to work, get to school. They can speak to that effect as well, and I know there are a number of elected officials, councilors, residents, who I think all share our concerns. A number of commissions and boards are here as well to speak to their concerns on it. So I wanted to lend my voice to express those concerns, lend my voice to the others, and I'm certainly available to answer any questions or give additional information. But I wanted to make sure that all of our department heads and those officials had their opportunity to be heard, and I know there will be. And I thank you for listening to me tonight, and again, certainly available to answer any questions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So we heard from Police, now we'll hear from Fire, and then we'll hear Consular Gould.
Hi, I'm Chris Dowling, here to represent the Peabody Fire Department. I'm here to speak in opposition of this, the proposed project. We had an opportunity to review the initial plans, and there were clearly fire department access problems there. That's why in writing, we rejected it, and they've never, they haven't acted on, on our denial of their initial permit, permit set. So I'm just here, I'm not going to keep, repeat everything that's been said, but on behalf of the Peabody Fire Department, we're in opposition of this project.
Thank you very much. Consular Gould? Here's my chocolate walnut ice cream.
About the ice cream, huh? Madam Chairwoman, thank you for letting me speak. Consular Osborne, I was chairing a neighborhood meeting tonight on your recommendation, so thank you for that recommendation. I'm going to be real brief. I'm the chair of the Disability Commission, and to me, it's incomprehensible that we will build a facility that will have a handicapped person potentially come down an elevator and into a flood zone and have no access to their car or to any other vehicle, the way it's going to be designed, and we all, those hundred-year floods are happening more frequently. It's, it's just not the right concept, and I don't, don't support it at all. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Consular Gould. So no more councilors, no more Conservation, we heard from the mayor. So now it is time for the abutters. So you've, you've heard lots and lots of testimony, you've heard lots of reasons why people are opposed to this. Please just keep in mind, everybody can come up and speak, but once again, if something has already been stated, all you need to do is come up and state your name and address for the record and say that you agree with all the opposition, and you'll get credit for it. It all goes on the record. So if you want to line up, or if you just want to take turns, the microphone is Mr.
Really don't need it, but all right. My name is Dick St. Pierre, and I represent, we represent the Peabody Historical Society. We only have one speaker, but I wanted to just introduce the members. This is Ginny Archeros, Sheila Tambrosio, Andy Metropolis. I should ask if anybody's a former student, raise their hand. And Tom Zellin, Tom will make the presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Andrew Metropolis, 5 Dane Street. For the last 48 years, I've been involved with the Historical Society in various capacities. Ironically, 48 years ago, one of the first meetings I attended was over what you are talking about. And the issue at the time was the public right-of-way that traverses the property of the Elks. Most maps will show on 39 Washington Street, a public right-of-way that goes from Washington Street paralleling Oak Street to the Elk property, and then it goes behind the houses 39, 35, 33, and then cut across what is today the parking lot to, I believe it's Little's Lane, and there's a gate at that particular spot. That area is a public right-of-way, and it's been on the records for several hundred years. And that's what I wanted to mention to you, and Tom will speak now.
Good evening. Again, my name is Tom Zellin. I'm the treasurer and a member of the Board of the Historical Society. Some 20-something years ago, this, the Peabody Historical Society transferred free of charge a, a part of our lot to the Peabody Lodge of Elks, and it is Lot 095-093A. The transfer to them was with the restriction, with the restriction that if the Elks ever sold their property, that land has to come back to us. So whatever this board decides, whether they decide to approve or disapprove, this piece of property, this part of this parcel has to come back to us. Now, just as important, or maybe even more important, is that if you look at the, if you look at the plot plan, they're, they're building eight townhouses along the lot line of the Peabody Historical Society. And I don't know about you, but I don't think anybody could put a step ladder up within two feet, and they want to build eight buildings within two feet, that's from me to you, from our land to the back of their house. So it would be a tragic disaster to anyone living in that house. First of all, if they could ever build it, they, they, no one could build a house within two feet of our lot line, and we're not going to let them come on our lot line. Secondly, and more importantly, if anyone was ever in that house and there was a fire, there'd be no way for the Fire Department to get in to save the lives of the people living in those eight houses. So for whatever other reasons, we fear the, fear the safety of the people who are living in that unit. So we are opposed to, to the present development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zellin. Thank you, Peabody Historical Society. A butter?
Yes. Good evening. My name's Barry Holby, 45, Washington Street. I'm a direct abutter. Actually, my parking area is contiguous with the parking lot at the Elks. I'm not going to say the same thing everyone else has. I agree with pretty much everything as it relates to size, scope, and character. I don't think any of it is really called for in that neighborhood. I'm pretty open-minded when it comes to entrepreneurship, and I'm not one to squash a project, just the wrong project, and this is definitely the wrong project. I have nine properties on Washington Street. I go up and down Washington Street no less than six times every day. That's the worst part of Washington Street. People try and take a left on Oak Street, people try and come off Aborn Street. It's, it's a bad spot, everyone knows, everyone's been in that traffic. When you look at 40B, the language supporting 40B, there's language in there that directly relates to density and environmental impacts. This project, I think, raises red flags on both, both of those two items, directly. It's not even a question about it. As retired firefighter, I share the Fire Department's views. If they could get some apparatus in there, if they needed backups, there's not a chance. They'd have to park up on Washington Street and walk down. So that, I mean, on a windy night, you could easily have a conflagration in the neighborhood. It's not that far, it's not that hard to imagine. So yeah, I'm just against it, and I don't want to be redundant as to what everyone else has. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Excuse me. My name is Howard Coles.
I reside on 10 Sandbourne Street, and I just basically want to say that I, you know, totally in agreement with all the previous speakers, and I'm totally opposed to this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Charlene, and I, what's? My name is Charlene Cruz, and I live at 5 Sandbourne Street. One thing about the 28th, when they was digging in the parking lot, don't they have to notify the neighborhood when they're going to do something like that? No? Okay. Well, everybody was saying things tonight on fire, because it's not a good area to have a lot of traffic. And when the Three Deckers on Little Lane was on fire, the fire trucks couldn't get around the corner, they had to park in the Elks to put out that fire. So I saw that happen. I'm concerned about the flood zone, you know, the flood, the water, because I've seen it happen a lot where, because I've been there 17 years, and I'm, I'm really against what's going to happen to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor McGinn?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I made, as you recall, members of the ZBA, I made extensive comments on this topic at the November 25, 2019 hearing on this matter, and listed a number of reasons why this area should not be further residentially developed. As tonight's meeting approached, I was contacted by a number of abutters that, for health, work, or other reasons, couldn't be here this evening. All were consistently opposed to the proposal. Two of these abutters asked me to read letters on their behalf, which I'd like to do now. First letter, this is dated February 3, 2020. This is Deborah Ferraris. I reside and own 8 Little's Lane in PBD, Mass. I am totally opposed to this project on Oak Street, which is two doors down from my property. This neighborhood and this part of the city is already way too congested and overpopulated, and there's not enough parking for the present residents. The schools are already over capacity, and there are not enough teachers for the student load. I live on a one-way street that has no sidewalks, and people come up and down any way they please, they do not follow the one-way. And the traffic in PBD Square is already a nightmare. I implore you not to go through with this project. I do not have the resources to move, nor do I feel I should be forced to sell my home and relocate because of unsafe conditions. Please hear my voice on this matter, and that is from Deborah Ferraris, 8 Little's Lane.
Excuse me. You're a little bit disturbing. Mr. Zellin and whomever. Thank you.
This next letter is to the Zoning Board of Appeals. It is from Judith and George Donahue, 39 Washington Street, PBD, Massachusetts. My husband and his family have lived here for many years, since 1935, when his father bought the house. My husband and many other children skated on the parking lot of the Elks. They are wetlands, and they are not to be built on. We have great concerns for this project and should not be approved, and it should not be approved. Some of them are the overflow of children at the well school, the safety and health of the residents and those living in the area, the environment issues, plus the design of the buildings. There is no open space for the residents. I hope the board will take our concerns and investigate, will take our concerns and investigate the matter further and not leave this area with problems that cannot be repaired. Sincerely, Judith and George Donahue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other abutters? Anybody else in the entire audience wishing to speak for or against?
Hello, my name is Diane Hamilton, and I am against this project, also against a J.B. Thomas. So a quick look at the 40B rules. I found this. Chapter 40B regulations have extended safe harbor status to towns below the 10% housing affordability threshold, I believe we're at 9-point-something, that meet minimum housing growth targets. Municipalities that have planned for housing growth through an approved housing production plan may achieve temporary safe harbor status under Chapter 40B with affordable housing growth of .5% per year. In eastern and central Massachusetts, the median town would need to add less than 30 affordable units per year under an approved housing protection plan to achieve the temporary safe harbor status and maintain robust local control over Chapter 40B development. So my suggestion is, why don't we have an approved housing production so that we can take control over what goes where in our city?
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. One, one more speaker.
Good evening, members of the Board of Appeals. Kirk Belavant's, Community Development Director. I just want to update the, the Board of Appeals since the last meeting, which I believe was held on November 25. We did, the city consistently holds what's called the Construction Review Committee. Anytime large projects come through the city looking for different types of permits, we'll meet with various departments, police, fire, health, conservation, planning, building, so forth, and engineering. And we'll go over different projects, and we'll ask for different information, and we'll take a look at plans that have been submitted. So we did, we did hold that meeting December 17 with the applicants for this project. We went over their, their plans briefly. We talked to them about peer review. Because of the complexity of this project, the city will hire outside consultants to work for us to review all the different components of the application. So in that process, we did, working with, through, with and through the engineering department, we have identified four areas that we plan to have peer review completed. Drinking water would be done by consultant Weston and Sampson. Traffic will be done by World Tech. Sewer would be done by Ty and Bond. And then stormwater calculation review and civil engineering would be done by AECOM. These are all consultants that the city has, is either working with currently or has worked with in the past. We have developed relationships with those consultants. They've done many projects throughout the city, so we look for them. They're more familiar with the city of PBD. They've done work in the city of PBD. So we've entered into a contract in regards to that. The consultant is footing the bill for that, so we accept a check from the consultant, and then we, on our behalf, we go and hire these peer review to do the work. They're in the process of doing that now. We expect that the, the first two consultants to be ready to present before the board would be traffic and water. So we would have, we would expect World Tech and Weston and Sampson to come before the board at their next meeting to, to address those concerns that they have as our city reviewers and peer reviewers. Hopefully, in that same process, we would get Ty and Bond to complete their sewer as well, so it's possible that we could have that on the next Board of Appeals meeting as well. The last one is a little bit more complicated, stormwater control. As you've heard this evening, there's a great deal of discussion about flood. That has a lot to do with stormwater control. So the AECOM, in which the city has hired to take a look at that, will use a little bit more time, a little bit more engineering goes into that and review of those, those plans. That'll take a little bit longer, and that would be not ready for the next meeting, but probably the meeting after that. So in regards to that, that's what we should expect coming up at the next meeting. And then lastly, there, the city did have a housing production plan that had expired. We did have a consultant put together a plan, and that's, that has been submitted to the city council, and we expect to go before them, I believe, next month in order to review that housing production plan for approval. So we are in the process of doing that, and we've done that in the past, and we continue to do that, just for that reason, too.
Thank you, Mr. Belavant. So this concludes the meeting for tonight, and just to let everyone know, next meeting will be March 2. March 2. Now, we, we, we follow an agenda, obviously, and everybody that showed up tonight, I want to thank you, and we did give you an opportunity to speak. If you do have something that just comes to your mind, and you just have a burning desire, March 2, to come to the podium to speak, of course, we'll allow it, as long as it's very different than what we heard this evening. So as Mr. Belavant said, March 2, we will hear from water, traffic, and hopefully sewer. And once again, if there is an official or an abutter that feels that they need to speak, we will. So that is, Larry, come in, March 2. March 2, right here, same time, same place, and we will continue on with 40 Oak Street. All set?
Motion to adjourn.